Fish.
Yeah, sure, yeah, like the main dude out of three with the guns. The, the one who had an enhanced.
Well, the one, the one who escaped and didn't die out the rest of them.
Yeah.
Three of them escaped.
Yeah, exactly. Three escaped.
One robey robe. Yeah. Uh, I don't think he was against them. I'm almost positive that getting a salty starfish was getting a squid put inside you.
Yeah, no, I agree. Uh, I'm, I'm just saying.
Oh, I read this situation wrong. I remember everyone but one dying. My bad.
That's what we had assumed happened, but there was only one purple robe wearing guy alive, but there were also the two guys with the assault rifles.
Yeah, yeah, well, e- either way, we both agree that best way to know is just to talk to him. And the way to uh find him is to just release quote unquote the stripper. Let her move about and then we'll track her and see where he tries to pick her up or take her out.
Okay, um.
It would have to be quite.
There's no telling where she's gonna go. She literally has like a hundred thousand dollars to go retire.
No, 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 there is a way. If we were to give her a cab, then one of us hides in the trunk. And both me and uh Leo volunteered harm to do that because he wasn't there to defend himself.
Uh.
And he's the smallest stat of all of us.
Yes, and that's also a reason.
If we're gonna call her a cab. Why wouldn't we just, if we're calling her cab to a place, why wouldn't we just drive ahead of her to the place?
Well, she might change direction. She might just say, well, I'm not going to that place. I'm going here instead. I'm saying that we, if we are with her without her knowing, then.
She does still have the uh the squid inside of her. We know that brings out darker tendencies. And she has a lot of money.
Can we help that? Yep.
Yeah.
You figured that out last session.
Yeah.
I'm loving the fact that none of the three of these people have realized that if we hire her a cab. Then we have GPS on the cab because it's on the app.
No, no, but it's fine. We have GPS on you when you're in the trunk.
We just put you in there while you're asleep. You just wake up in the trunk.
Butter boom.
Alright, well, this sounds like an interesting idea. When do you want to uh quote unquote send her on her way?
I mean, either that, does anyone know how to make a good disguise?
Uh, you, you're mastered in the life arts, aren't you?
Hmm, jail?
Uh, can you change your face?
I mean, you honestly, you need it like a bit more hair.
I can, I, I have some illusion. I can make her think I'm a different person, but either way.
I mean, I can make your face look different.
Ah, it's fine.
There's nothing wrong with my face. Here, hold still.
No, 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 I can't like start stepping back.
Yeah, like both of us. That is fine. But honestly though, you could be the cab driver without her knowing.
You want me to just ask her if she wants a ride somewhere?
I mean, no, because in that case she still knows that we are with her. And if she's actually in on it with these squid people, then she can't know that.
So if I give her a ride to drop her off there and you guys follow me where we are going. And then I drop her off and leave. We know where she is and she thinks she's alone.
True, but she wouldn't if, she wouldn't say, well, take us to a secret layer. Thank you. Yes, that address is E Road thirty-three.
We don't actually have a cab.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can just call a cab and then uh ask nicely for him to give us.
We're not stealing a cab car.
I didn't say that.
Listen, listen, hold on. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure secret layer she knew about was strip club. Pretty sure that that is the only layer that she ever experienced. But. So she's just gonna go back to her apartment. You're overthinking it. I can give her a ride back to her apartment if that's where she wants to go to pick up her things. But she's probably going to almost immediately move because she has money to go places, not her apartment.
Okay.
I think it's out of apartment. It's pretty true.
But we should be pretty good.
How? What?
We need to talk to Harm. We need to make some kind of super bug. And not the kind that he gives women, but rather something that he should, could put in her phone or something.
You mean like a bacteria?
No, like, what? Hey, look here, look, look at Leo. I, I watch a lot of, a lot of wa- a lot of watch, a lot of CIS shows, alright?
Are you gonna go to Harm's room and then open the door?
Yeah. I, I try to.
Smart gin.
Yeah.
You, you find Harm absolutely asleep, wearing headphones and nothing else.
And VR rig. He's moaning for some reason.
No, 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 he's asleep. Headset, nothing else.
Okay, that's fine. Um. So. I'm gonna do some magic, some wake the fuck up magic.
What? Oh dear. You could just wake him. Just shake him a little. That's magical.
Yeah, but I, I want him to wake up and feel rested so that he doesn't whine and complain.
A- and you think if you do that, he's not gonna wanna complain?
I would, I'd explain.
Instead of him wanting complaining for not being rested, you want him to complain because you woke him up and with magic.
He won't know that it's magic. He won't know that it's magic.
Up and he's not still tired, it will be magic.
Alright, fine. I just wake him up.
What do you want? Go away.
Hey, like, and I pull his earphones off like to wake him up like, hey, hey.
Wait a minute, that is not cool.
Wake up, wake up.
No.
It's like noon, wake up.
No.
Yes.
And he, he is sitting there fully awake at this point saying no, he's not gonna wake.
Hey, your stripper friend is still here.
And I'm over that. Tell her to go away.
Okay, well, come on, let's go aside. We gotta go talk and food.
Outside?
That'd be lunchtime. Yeah.
Why do you go outside?
You gotta go.
I don't wanna go outside.
Just get dressed, come on.
No. Here, 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 I have an idea, I have an idea, I have an idea.
Is his like computer, is his like laptop laying about somewhere?
His, his laptop is probably neatly on the desk because there, though, although his clothes are thrown everywhere across the room, his laptop is neatly on the desk.
Okay, well, I think that Leo said that he knew how to work this thing and I walk over to the door and grab your laptop and walk. Out the door to go outside. Oh, we just, we just need to um, something about getting a cab. Well, come on.
Put that down. Put it down. And at this point, Harm is completely serious.
Just to say, no matter what I fuck with you. So he does one of those where he's holding it like chest level and he lets go and then he reaches down and he catches it as it falls?
Hold on, I'm gonna have to make a roll on this.
That's how you get shot.
We just have to find the gun first.
Oh no, he knows where the gun is, that.
He's got core fundage. He knows where the gun is.
Come on, let's go. You've already slept half the day away. Hey.
Oh. You almost got a crit fail on that.
Yeah.
Holy shit.
But I imagine he's out of bed and standing now?
Um, yeah, with, he's actually reached for the gun, still wearing nothing else, but now.
Okay, good. He sets the laptop back on the desk. He says, okay, good. Now come on, let's go.
I will even either use this gun or this gun.
Harm walks over, picks up the laptop, carries it back to bed with him and says, it's not, uh, just, why?
Because they're convinced that this is a time critical thing and we have to let her go and follow her to the place and.
What's the problem? It's just a stripper.
She has a squid inside her.
She does?
Yeah, we told you that last night. How drunk were you?
I don't remember you saying that.
I'm almost positive.
You let me bring her home with a squid in her.
I told you it was important that they get home because she had a squid in her.
No, I thought you said it was important to get her home because there was squids in the thing, not in the her.
Not in the her.
Dude, come on. That is not cool.
You contracted AIDS.
You have.
Do you have squids now?
Uh huh.
That's a good point.
And then hang on seriously, that might actually be a problem.
When I say, when I say, oh, that's a good point, like I was thinking, I'm like, hmm, what exactly did you do with her?
Well, they played monop- Monopoly, dude. What do you think?
Ate that clammy shell.
Did you use protection?
So, I just Googled, man has sex with squid and it turns out he has salmonella now, so we may need to go to the hospital.
Doc, uh, what kind of role is it for resisting salmon- salmonella?
Salmonella? I guess, I guess I have to do a scan of Harm now.
Harm is just glaring at you at this point. Because this is all your fault.
Oh, it's not. I told you, you didn't listen. Of course, it's all his fault. Yeah, yep.
It could never be Harm's fault, so it's all your fault.
Um, I'm gonna do this as a ritual.
Your fault and that stupid old man's fault.
As a, as a ritual, I just gonna.
What did I do?
Just, just, just evolve him.
I did literally nothing.
Still your fault.
You doing this as a ritual, really? I wanna be sure if he's infected.
Yes, so you're standing there for one hour looking at him, very intensely.
Ritual is not always an hour, is it?
It's a very long time though.
Yeah, it is an hour.
Yeah, while he's naked.
A ritual can be anywhere from, well, it says it is a few rounds. But a round can be anywhere from a few seconds to a few minutes, depending on what type of round you're talking about.
Alright, then, then let's say like ten minutes.
So, Casey, can you sleep while he is looking at you naked?
This is what Harm is actually thinking whenever he starts doing his whole mumbo jumbo thing. Harm takes his laptop and goes and lays back down and just says, this is not cool, man. Just, just go away. And lays back down. And he can keep doing his ritual for Harm goes back to sleep.
No, that's fine. That's easier anyway.
Still stands like, can you fall asleep? Like you're naked, someone's watching you.
Oh no, Harm's not bothered at all about that.
He is not catch the squids. So I imagine justice is about to.
Unfortunately, he has catched uh hepatitis.
Uh, that's not good. That's not good. Ah.
Cure him of that hepatitis there?
I guess I could.
I need to touch your mouth, hang on.
Hey, uh, hey Harm, Harm, Harm. You have an STD. So has he actually gone back to sleep? Alright, I'm gonna roll him up in his blanket and then, is there a closet in this room?
I'm assuming there is. Probably full of piles of dirty clothes.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna roll him up in his blanket and put him in the closet. And close the closet door and then go back outside.
Harm sleeps through all of this?
I'm sorry, not hepatitis. Just crabs.
Okay, that's better. I'm like hepatitis, that's a doozy. That's a doozy. So, uh, Harm's gonna be sleeping for a while longer.
You only get ha- you only get hepatitis through ass to mouth. I was like, they do not go.
Ass to mouth, okay. It's good to know.
Uh, so yeah, Harm's uh still sleeping. He caught crabs though.
Leo just starts bursting into laughter, like to the point where he starts wheezing.
But at least he didn't get affected by this squid. Uh, is she still watching TV?
Yep. Okay. Hold on, I, I have to be right back.
So we're just gonna have to wait for him to get up.
This game has gone so bizarre.
See, brat, we can just go without him.
Except that you're wanting the stuff he can do.
I still don't know what they wanna, want you to do.
Hey, just go out on a little date, you know, see what's up, be like bait. I mean, you taking her out for a night on the town would be a good time to. Cause it being nighttime, the guy has probably, or is probably preparing in some way to kill. This person if, if he cares enough, so.
See, I'm, I'm fed up with her at this point though, so.
I doubt that he cares enough, though.
Well, maybe not to track her down, but if.
I mean, you read everything that she had to read in her mind. Does she know anything of importance?
Uh, I did actually have quite a bit of time in that backseat to just scour memories and I have perfect recall. So I go back.
Doc's not here to answer you.
Yeah, he's not.
I'll wait.
So where did that, um. Uh, spirit thing track them to Father Keegan?
Madman, do you want to stay too?
I guess so.
Well, I'm gonna go to the bathroom quick then. Be right back.
You're lucky I didn't go find the Saran Wrap, Casey.
I'm back. And now everyone else.
Sweet. Um. Seeger was going to ask you if the stripper had anything of value in her memories when he went through them, cause he has perfect recall, something like that.
Um. Okay, where is Seeger? He's gone.
He, AFK.
Okay. Why does this Twix taste like a pretzel?
That is a good question.
Very good question.
I don't think I would keep eating a Twix that tasted like a pretzel. Not because it doesn't sound delicious. It does, but it's not supposed to taste that way, which is what would give me ca- would give me pause. You're not supposed to taste like this.
But you're good.
Therefore, something is wrong.
Weird. Uh. Anyone else wanna do anything or are we just waiting for Seeger to go back?
We're waiting for Seeger to come back, Harm to wake up and.
Harm will eventually wake up about four PM.
And then for Madman to get here, because I was gonna ask Madman where the bloodhound actually tracked the guy to.
In Jane.
Sorry about, about that. I'm back.
Oh, sweet. Where did the, uh, your spirit dog track the, uh, the guys to?
Um, no, he, he tracked them until they shot him and he had to retreat. But where, uh, the location where they shot him, so he needed to retreat, I don't know. Dockwood.
Downtown alley. Uh, somewhere nearby the strip club.
Okay.
Too clo- too close.
So presumably.
About like five blocks away.
Yeah.
Can we, um, look up online? Who the, uh, owner of the strip club is according to public record?
Sure.
And then see. I should be able to. I have, I have computer knowledge and I have investigation.
I'm just gonna nip to the loo real quick. I'll be right back.
What would you want me to roll, uh, wits or intelligence with computer knowledge?
Uh, intelligence, computer knowledge.
Okay.
What's going on?
Uh, nothing. Just doing it quick.
Yeah.
What's the difficulty?
Difficulty is, uh, s- six.
Any DP mod?
Nope.
Two successes.
Um. God. You know, I gave them a name before. I'm back.
Well, I guess the per se name isn't important, cause the next thing I'm gonna do is search to see if that name owns anything else in the city.
Is it Joe? Something like Jim, Joe? Johnny Storm.
No.
Jimmy.
Jimmy?
I'm the bad guy. That's it. I'm the bad guy.
Jimmy Joe John Bob. Either way, it's Taverly's.
Okay.
Two brothers own, own the, own the strip club.
So, do they own anything else? Oh, three successes that time.
They own an apartment building.
Same one that she lives at?
We don't know where she lives yet.
I do, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Fantastic. So we know where. Do we, does, does that building have any connection to the boat owner?
Well, the only connection would be the owner and this is the only two properties that they own that we can find is the apartment and the strip club.
Uh, you don't know if there's any connection between, um, the owner and.
Uh, you know what we could do? We could run a search to see if, um, the company that he owned made any acquisitions during the period he was a squid. Like bought any warehouses or anything like that during the time he can't remember.
Good idea. Maybe even sold something that he owns.
Uh, I don't think I can figure that out. I think we need Harm to wake up.
He, he bought a giant warehouse with a big tank. It, it, it says he has squid tank. I wonder what, what that could have been.
So Doc, was the, the place where the wolf spirit dog thing got ambushed in between the strip club and that apartment complex?
Uh. Yes, but not directly between the two.
But they were going kinda in that direction, maybe?
Around there, yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's all the deducting that I can do with what we have so far.
In my time of occult study that I was doing, did the name Taverly ever come up?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Hmm, nobody uses their real name in occult stuff.
So true.
So.
So you said you wake up by four PM and it's like, what, noon to one-ish right now? So we have three hours before he wakes up.
It's about noon.
So, and, and she is still like around.
She's chilling, watching TV.
I imagine she won't leave until we tell her to.
Well, she said she feels bad for taking all of the money and then not really getting to do anything. She's really calm about everything that's happened too.
Yeah.
Again, I think she's.
Her calling over one of the retainers and, uh, he eventually brings her po- her popcorn.
I didn't even know we had popcorn in this house.
Of course we have popcorn. She's just a really good leech.
Anyway, um, I suppose most of you guys have any ideas. I'll get back to studying.
Did you, uh, figure out if she hadn't do anything important?
Uh, oh, right, uh, Doc, since I have perfect recall with time in mind. When I was looking at her memory of her first being squidded. What happened? Like, was she with anyone?
She was oddly enough, yes. Um, she was with a man. Who, whom she had met in a bar. Um. She was pretty easy, you imagine, because she went home. I mean, nowadays, nowadays women are, they can, you know, they go on Tinder and then they get fucked. That's it, right? So.
Right.
She did, she basically did that and met a guy on Tinder. And, um. He shoved it down her throat.
Neat.
Among, among another thing.
Which thankfully I skipped that memory. I skipped that memory.
No, you don't.
Oh no, you relived it.
I'm skipping that memory.
Too late. If you're saying that you wanna skip it, it means you experienced it. Sorry.
Uh, anyway, so I, I.
Now you know.
What did you expect delving into the memories of the stripper? Really? What did you expect?
I mean, she wasn't a stripper before.
Yeah.
You know, you know for a fact, she was a law major, um, but even law majors use Tinder, so fucking.
Yeah. Um, did, is the guy the same purple robe guy or could I not see his face?
You couldn't see his face. I doubt that he was wearing purple robes on Tinder.
No, no, obviously not, but I imagine purple robes are a bit of a turn off.
Depends on the crowd, I guess.
Depends on who you're trying to attract.
Um, but yeah, I just relayed that he was, that she was about a man who was quite, what, what was he charming? That typical like, or was he?
Very charming, yes. He was extremely charming.
Almost unnaturally charming?
Yes.
Did, did she get mind affected? Did she get mind affected?
Oh, naturally bad.
Uh, you're not sure. It's hard to tell.
Was there a rapid shift in personality, like, uh, this guy is maybe not my type to, oh my god, he's really hot or anything like that?
It was, there was always like, you know, like, cause on Tinder, you, you.
Yeah.
Talked to the person before then.
You both knew what was going to happen.
Yeah, yeah.
You look like your picture, I look like mine. Alright, this is happening. And then he pulled out a squid.
I don't remember.
What you were looking.
Surprise.
Can you not access her memories for when she was affected by a squid?
Uh, I couldn't. Oh, wait, I couldn't from that point?
No. Same thing with John Williams.
I wonder if the memories are inside the squid itself.
That I was going to bring up later. I don't think it's a good idea to try to read its mind.
No. If anything, we should just try. If anything.
Immediately, Casey's just like.
Hey, hey, be quiet crab man.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm averse to taking the risk, but. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm averse to taking the risk, but the, I, I need to remind us all the creature that we're dealing with is possibly Lovecraftian, which never, never ends well.
I don't understand what that means.
I really recommend you read him. They're good books. H.P. Lovecraft. He's a fantastic author.
Yeah.
A bit mental.
No, thank you.
Great racist stories.
Well, I guess we're waiting for Harm to wake up then, right?
Great racist stories. Well, I have a book for you. Hang on. Is that it?
Well, while we're killing all this time, would you all, do you want to, uh, join me in some meditation?
Nah.
I think I'll pass. I need to get back to the books. Maybe there's a correlation.
Clear your mind. When you get back to your books, you may be able to, to understand more of them.
Hmm. How long will it take?
See you later.
Hmm, like an hour?
Ah, fuck it, why not? He, he goes and tries to meditate with you.
Oh, cool. So I just walk you through really simple Kada. And I do another ritual.
So you wanna do ritual on yourself and him?
No, not myself. Just, just him. Just him. I've already done mine for myself earlier this morning. He doesn't get any willpower though. So it'll be a life four effect, so the difficulty will be four instead of three. Alright. One. Four. And I don't know if he has to roll anything or not. I doubt he does, but I suppose he could if he wanted to.
I don't know what I'd roll.
Good. Well, shit.
Alright, good. No botch.
Wasn't a botch, yeah.
Alright, so that means, so would the table be the same if I'm doing it on him, Casey?
Um, it would take higher... Yeah, the difficulty would go up.
Okay.
Because you're affecting someone else.
So... Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The story is a session, right? Actually, I'm gonna do the, the day, so... Three, six, nine. You get nine dots to put into mental or physical stats for the day.
Holy shit.
Bear in mind, you can only cap out at five in anything.
Right. It's still amazing. Fucking, you said nine?
Yep. And then, uh...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Make sure you, you create a backup.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I always, what I usually do is to the right of the stats where you would put your, um, expertise thing, I put my original values. That way I can just change the dots and when the day starts over, I go back and then do it again.
Okay, so bump perception, dexterity, and bump stamina too as well. Nice.
And then I go crash on the couch and see what, uh, her friend Candy, Candy is watching.
Cherry. Not Cherry.
See, not even...
He wants it. You know what? I don't think it fucking matters what we call her. We just gave her two hundred grand.
You really, you, she...
Hang on. Well, it's not like I said anything. I just wondered.
Has risen from ten grand to two hundred grand. How much money were actually exchanged here?
We don't know.
I don't think Harm even cared.
Yes.
You didn't pay two hundred grand to get laid.
Yes. Yes, she, yes, he did.
Jesus Christ.
He paid two hundred grand for two pumps and then to mindfuck her.
No, and then be teleported into, in front of our fucking police squad.
He, he paid for a lot more than it actually happened because someone started coming to the door screaming about his card and he ended up botching a roll and getting teleported away.
Hey, it's not my fault you left your card somewhere.
So someone will probably be getting a bill for Cherry.
Good luck with that. I wasn't even there. Unless you're talking about Leo.
That's possible too.
I'm not even a United States citizen anymore.
Hey man, you paid... Hey, you can't say you didn't get anything out of that transaction. You did get crabs.
That's true, you did.
Yeah, two hundred thousand for crabs? It's nice.
But yeah, I sit down on the couch next to her and see what's on TV.
Uh, animal shows. She's watching animal shows.
Interesting.
Lots of visceral things like, she's watching deers get eaten by fucking lions and shit like that.
Pretty dark.
What channel is that?
Animal Planet.
The Animal Gruesome, The Gruesome Show.
Have you ever watched Shark Week?
Yeah, Shark Week. Uh, if it was Shark Week, that'd be amazing.
She's like Squid Week.
Lion Week.
So, when Harm gets up, we're heading out, right? That was the plan?
Yeah, we'll effectively just hang out until Harm is awake.
Okay. Harm eventually wakes up in the closet.
Probably in pain fro- from being sta- stood up sleeping.
No, I was gentle with him. Otherwise he would have woke him up.
She was still standing for four hours.
Yeah, he wakes up in the closet. He, he tries to figure out why he's in the closet. He checks his email to see if that has an answer. Doesn't, strangely enough.
Oh no, you rolled up in the blanket with your arms at your side.
No, I know, but when he gets out of the blanket, the first thing he does is check his email to see if that has an answer for why he's in there.
Uh, you actually have an email.
Oh.
From an unknown sender.
Oh.
Oh, I, I delete those. They're, they're usually spam.
Okay.
Jesus.
As soon as you delete it, it comes back again.
That means it's a virus. Uh, that means I'm gonna be doing some, some data checking on it to figure out what this is actually is. I'm not opening it, but I'm actually gonna do a data effect to find out, even if it says it's unknown, who is it actually from?
Okay, it's from your mother.
Then I'm definitely deleting it.
So when we are we doing this plan, guys? Things, it seems like we're fucking out in the house.
Any DP mod?
Uh...
I'm basically just doing like a data three.
What are you trying to do?
Data three on the email to find out the information about who it's from, where it's from, that kinda stuff.
Okay. Are you gonna read it?
No.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
Not opening it, just doing...
DP negative two.
Ouch. Difficulty is, uh, six.
Yep.
Minus one because I'm using my focus, my smartphone. Um, and the house gives me a minus as well, doesn't it?
If you're doing a ritual, yeah.
If you're doing a ritual.
Uh, yeah, I'll do it as a ritual. So that's another minus two?
Huh?
Is the house a minus one or minus two?
Minus two.
Minus two.
So it should be...
A total of three.
Total of three. Uh, net cafe.
Well, I wasn't actually done, but if it pops up that quickly, then...
You only needed a few successes.
Oh, cool.
Unless you, you wanna know more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find out as much as I can about it.
Okay. Keep, keep rolling then.
Yep. Oh, I'd like to send an email to Harm.
Is it a picture of a cat?
No, it's just a three-letter email. Um...
No.
Subject last night, body, you have crabs.
No, he has, uh, hepatitis B.
No, that got changed. That's only from, yeah, apparently that's only from, uh, some dirtier things that he didn't quite do.
Well, he says he didn't do.
Hang on. Mm-hmm.
Doc misspoke.
I misspoke because, yes, he, he basically had done some things, enough to get crabs, but not enough to get anything else. It was, it was quick.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine.
Uh, so yeah, so you find out that, uh, he was at a net cafe at three o'clock AM. This person sent you...
What kind of an account was it? Was it like a burner account or was it, uh, there had to have been some kind of account that it was sent from?
It was definitely a burner account.
So someone created a brand new email account with false information to send this email.
God, I'm trying to find out how to, just in case you open it.
Open it in a sandbox, or in sandboxy.
Well, yeah, that's obvious. Uh, yeah, so basically you, Doc, I'm going to, uh, drop it onto a tablet that's not connected to anything else that has been secured, cleaned, wiped, um, not network-connected, an isolated system, um, that has no connection whatsoever of any kind to anything else. And then I'm gonna open it and see what it says.
Uh, nihilation sphere appears.
You've got mail. That's what it says.
Well, if it's, if it's from, if it's from AOL...
Penis enlargement. Large penis, extra large right now.
Yes, we heard from Candy that you need it.
Be funny if it was just a virus that Doc is fucking with you.
Viagra, Viagra, Viagra. Buy it now. Fifty percent off.
Grow eight inches, dude.
The doctors hate him.
I can't reply because it's on a, um, an, an, a disconnected system, but I, I chuckle at that. It's funny.
Okay.
I, I assume it's from someone that I beat in some, you know, gaming competition somewhere that's trying to, you know, wind me up.
Got it.
Because no actual evil person would send a message that corny.
Unless they were trying to maybe throw you off.
Um, once I've sent my emails, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out of the closet. Um, put some clothes on and head down for fried eggs and hot sauce.
Hey, look who's up.
Your sleep schedule is terrible, Harm.
You want some coffee?
Did she get my email?
So's your face.
Did she get my email?
You sent me a... Ha ha, funny. I'm gonna get some eggs. Anyone else want anything?
We've already eaten.
We had lunch a little while ago. Thanks though.
Your, uh, your lovely guest Cherry is still here on the couch, getting popcorn everywhere.
I thought it was Candy.
Who cares?
I'm, I'm bored of that.
Hey, don't be rude. She can hear you.
No.
Name is Cherry. Yeah, she's sitting right here.
She just puts her hands up and goes, "Oh, okay."
Turn this around. Shit.
Sorry, they aren't the most, uh, considerate individuals.
I don't care if her name is Cherry, right?
You didn't even tell me she had a squid in her.
Her name is Cherry, yes.
Oh, this? He, he was right this time? Shit, okay. I, I thought it was Carrie.
Hey, I may mess up the first two times, but after that, I try and get it right.
In a sense, it is Carrie if you mispronounce the C-H.
Did, did you, did you hear Harm's response to you saying he's not considerate?
Yeah, I heard you.
Okay. Cause she prob- she probably would have heard that as well.
Okay, this is awkward. I'm going somewhere.
Hot sauce.
Yep.
Uh, I'll probably follow you in the, in the kitchen and talk there while you're making food.
While, yeah, when you're walking past Leo and say, "Tell him about, about the plan" and wink, like, yeah, and then father keying walks off.
Okay. Just like looks at you and shakes his head.
To God, I get scared every time he talks about a plan.
No, you know the plan and you agreed to the plan. Shut up.
No, I know the plan that we agreed to, but then that just reminds me of the strip club plan, in which case you're gonna beat a bouncer over the hip with a bottle.
No, no.
As part of the plan.
I preferred my plan before that, which I was going to infiltrate the backstage by being a stripper.
It's a terrible plan. You could have seen it was a gentleman's club.
Exactly. So if he was a gentleman, he should have been allowed in the club.
Exactly. Makes sense.
He was allowed in the club. He just wasn't allowed in the strip with everybody.
Yeah, discrimination, man. That's all I'm saying.
Hardcore discrimination.
Yeah, this, this fucking country.
Still think that, you know, there's a case there for you.
Well, take him to court, man. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll win.
I'm just a simple priest with a simple dream.
To be a stripper.
To take my clothes off for the enjoyment of other people.
Could you see the headlines? Priest denied chance to strip at gentleman's club.
Yes.
I mean, the story just writes itself.
Uh-huh.
So while you're making eggs, Leo comes up and says, "Uh, so we've got a plan to use her as bait."
You didn't, you jackasses didn't even tell me she had a bloody squid.
Well, that actually, I think, uh, I think they tried, but you were pretty drunk.
I don't believe you. You should have told me. It's not cool.
You know what? The next time it happens, I'm sure, I'm sure I'll be there to, to help.
Oh, like you helped with the last one? Shot her in the damn face.
What? Oh, you mean the, the mermaid. Just forget about that. Anyway, we're gonna use her as bait. We're gonna head out tonight and, uh... Well, no, because you need to take her out on a date.
Why the hell would I do that?
Are you changing the plan?
What? That was the plan.
No, that wasn't the plan.
To take, if Harm's just taking her out on a date, then...
No, I'm not. I'm done with her. I'm not taking her on some date.
Then follow her. Being on a date would be easier. We're using her as bait.
What for?
To drive the guy killing these things.
She's a worthless slipper, stripper with a squid in her. I mean, what kind of bait is that?
The bait of a magical entity inside of her wrapped around her heart.
Look, if he's trying to turn people into squids, then he's already done her. He's gonna be looking for someone that's not a squid.
Well, no, someone's killing the squids and that could either be a valuable ally or information.
No, it's the same bloody...
We have no proof of that.
We're supposed to find the guy that's making people... Well, no, look, we're supposed to find the guy that's making people squids. The guy that's shooting squids is not the guy making squids. So why are we trying to find the guy that's shooting squids? He's looking for squids when we're looking for the guy that's making squids.
Either it's the same guy covering himself up. Because he knows mages are on to him. He knows the orders on to him. Or it is someone trying to kill this cult and whoever's creating the squids. In either case, it's a valuable source of information.
I kind of disagree. You see, if the guy was trying to cover up that he was making squids, instead of shooting the squids that he had made, he would have shot the people that found the squids he made.
We, look, we don't, there's a lot of unknowns around this case, okay? It is better to slash things off with possibility than to add more.
I've got a headache. I need to not have a hangover.
Then hurry up.
Let me have some eggs. Go away, old crazy person.
They are handing you eggs.
Hmm. I pour about half a bottle of hot sauce on the eggs.
Okay.
I, I just look at you and say, what's the point? You can't even taste the eggs anymore.
That is the point.
Then why? I, I just don't understand kids.
You just hear, you just hear from the other room, let them bad eat it. Peace, damn it.
Turning off the, uh.
I don't know how much of this she's heard.
Just mumbling to himself as he's walking around, just goddamn kids. Throw them out on the street.
Like I was in the living room still and like turn, turn off the volume on the TV like, uh, yeah, and then God say, listen to the TV because it's never. Hmm, lies and stuff. And you should listen to it with the animals and stuff, you know? Right? Want coffee?
Don't you have somewhere to go pray?
I am.
Very loudly between the TV and us.
Yeah, how I pray is up to me. And obviously I do it correctly, not you.
So does he? After like the eggs. Are you less hungover?
A little bit, yeah.
Uh, tiny bit.
What, uh, what time is it? Is it getting evening time?
Um, it is, yeah, it's going about four thirty, five. So what are you doing?
I, I look over to Cherry and I say, do you wanna go ahead and get something to eat?
Sure.
Alright, let's go. We're going out for food.
Bring, bring me back something this time. Don't, god damn it, don't do that just because Harm is petty.
What?
No, nevermind. He, Leo's like, kind of frantically going in circles, just like raging to himself. Yeah.
I was just gonna order pizza, you know?
Nah, we've been cooped up in the house all day. Not all of us slept all day.
Don't see why not.
And yeah, so, uh, I go get on my bike. Say here, if you guys wanna come, or if you guys wanna go get something, the keys to the truck are right here. I leave them on like the little dish by the, by the door in the little entryway.
Yeah. Have we actually decided what to do? Because we had a plan. Are we doing it or are we not doing it?
We're, we're doing.
Harm following along, I mean.
Well, I'm taking her out on a date now and then I'm gonna take her back to her apartment, probably.
Right, um.
So we gotta follow?
I, that was the plan.
Follow of, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll follow a fair distance behind though.
I, I heard enough to know that, uh, Harm isn't going to want to go through with his part of the plan, so I'm just doing his part for him.
I mean, it is easier her being on a date, cause then you're right next to her to protect her.
Yeah, but you're working off the assumption that she wants to go on a date with him.
She just said, yes, let's go get food. That's.
That's not a date.
Exactly what a date is.
Uh, not out of that context.
We go out and we go to like a. A nice-ish restaurant. I don't know, like, not a fine dining restaurant like Harm would go to, but like kind of a. Steakhouse-esque place.
I, I'm, I'm, I walk up to Keegan and say, before we go, I'll take the keys, just go and, go and take Harm's card.
Huh? I would buy their counter. I'm not doing that.
What?
No, I'm, I'm talking to Keegan, see.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, let's just go and I, I don't wanna deal with all that.
Ah, fine.
Plus, oh, right. I mean, stealing is, is a sin and I am no.
Right, right. You steal a cab car, but you won't steal his credit card.
Allegedly. Hypothetically.
You allegedly won't steal a credit card.
Yeah, I'm gone at this point.
No, I'm doing this on purpose to, cause I don't wanna be directly behind them. I wanna follow an okay distance back.
Yeah, and I guess, well, I mean, they're going by car, right?
No, by bike.
By bike? Yep, well, okay, vehicle. How about that? They're not walking there. Okay, cool. And we are going with, uh, with car?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Doc, how easy would it be for me to summon the lesser version of Buddy again? To have him av- available in case of shit hitting the fan?
Um.
They can stand by.
Like, do you wanna just call that same spirit back as?
Yeah, like attract, yeah, it's, it's like attract your spirit, right?
Difficulty five, yeah.
So it's like, dude, do you remember me? Get back here.
We had all this time to kill where I could have helped you with all of this.
Well, yeah.
Did you wait till I'm gone to do it?
Yeah.
Uh, you doing it as a ritual?
Uh, I mean, this is kinda on the way to the car.
Okay, so no.
Yeah.
Does anyone even tell me you're leaving?
Yeah.
You see Buddy appear.
Cool.
He looks a little bit iffy though.
Yeah. I say.
You screwed me up the last time I was here.
Yeah.
I'll be right back. Real quick.